Good evening. I would like to call this May 8, 2023, Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Conklin.
Here.
Ms. Lavelette.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think first on our agenda this evening is our Transpar presentation. Dr. Motley?
That is correct. We have the pleasure of having Micah Bressfield here from Transpar, which is a third-party organization, a business that actually is quite prevalent in the industry, and she is going to present the results of our transportation efficiency study for our audience and for our Board of Education tonight. I do have hard copies if you would like them.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to?
Um, okay.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Whether it could be traffic and more often than not, it's the shortage of drivers and it's the daily absenteeism. And so what we do is we come in to do an actual representative snapshot. We don't take just what's in the routing software and say, okay, what was planned is what's actually happening. Route yield is to go in and assess time and capacity of every run in order to determine where are there any runs that are under 60% utilized in time and capacity. What that indicates to us is if we see that a run is underutilized by 60% in time and capacity, in theory, we should have time to add more students or we should have time to add more stops. And that would also indicate to us, maybe there is some slack in the system. Maybe there is the opportunity to become more efficient. So we go through, we collect the data, we do a quality assurance control process in which we go through every run that maybe we have questions about with the Transportation Department, enter that information into the system so that that run can be analyzed and determined. Again, is it efficient in current state? And if not, why not? What, at a very high level, and again, this is without getting into the full-blown study, but at a very high level, what we found with the route yield analysis first and foremost is that the average bus runs in the morning were 30 minutes in length, in the afternoon were 27 minutes in length. And the standard deviation of those runs was anywhere between eight and 11 minutes. What that indicates to us first and foremost is that there is a constraint in time, particularly in the afternoon. This would mean that in order to operate efficiently and to make sure every bus had enough time to operate based on those average route lengths, that you would need at least 45 minutes between clearly delineated bus tiers. And then when I say clearly delineated, you would need to be able to group schools in a fashion that they had the same standard lengths of day in order to operate what we would consider to be a clean-cut, three-tier, four-tier, two-tier system, whatever it may be. But because there are so many varying lengths of instructional day and such a variety of start and end times, it's nearly impossible for you to group schools in a manner that allows you to assign specific buses solely to individual campuses, individual schools, and then to go on to the next tier, as you would see in a true three-tier, four-tier system. The varying lengths of day would need to be discussed and collectively worked with among the public and non-public schools to see if there could be alignment. But much of that is dictated by the individual schools. And so again, that requires either concession of everyone having the same length of day and the ability to get everyone in collective agreement on who would go first, second, or third, maybe even fourth if you did operate with a four-tier system. But those established bell time pillars are what directly impact transportation from the outset before we even start talking about how the routes themselves are structured. So this graph speaks volumes. First, you have 29 different start and end times across all of the public and non-public schools that Sylvania provides transportation to. For many of the districts that we work with, that have challenges in which they are limited in their ability to become more efficient, it starts with bell times. From the bell times currently, they range in the morning and you can see a much cleaner taper on the front end in terms of there are some groupings, but the back end is what is particularly problematic in that you have such a staggered and jagged end to the day that there is not enough time in the afternoon, particularly between that approximately 2:30 to 3:50 timeframe, for buses to completely unload, go to another tier. And that too is a part of what requires the use of hub-and-spoke type systems. Sylvania, again, and its non-public partners, would have to try to find a way to align the lengths of day first. It's not just about the start and end times. To be able to align the lengths of day first, to then be able to strategically group those schools into a first, second, and third tier. And by doing so, you would then also need, going back to the standard deviation and the average route length, 45 minutes between those clearly grouped tiers. But that orchestration and that coordination would be a collective conversation among all of the non-public and the public schools to determine, is there a way for those bell times to be aligned and those lengths of day to be aligned? So at a high level, as far as what the routing methodology analysis revealed, is the process of routing itself can be more efficient, and there are things that we spent time with the routing team in terms of the many tedious tasks that happen in the routing software to help them do the route planning in a more efficient manner. But the routes themselves, based on the restrictions and the constraints of the instructional lengths of day, the bell times, and the inability to affect change in those bell times currently, they're very limited opportunity to become more efficient in current state. The other part of the challenge is, again, where students reside in proximity to the schools that they're choosing to attend. Another key point is that right now, Sylvania does an incredible job of trying to provide a very high level of service to students in where it places its bus stops. State law allows for you to place bus stops at half a mile from students. That's currently not being done. There would be, in order to become more efficient, there are many routes that do have a large number of stops on them because we're trying to stop more closely to student homes. To become more efficient, routes have a strategic number of stops that are placed at clear intervals in centralized locations to allow that bus to not make multiple stops in a manner that makes it less efficient. So that would be a consideration that would have to be made if we're talking about in current state, trying to find efficiencies. But outside of that, the way that the routes are currently constructed and the ability to condense runs goes back to your ability to, again, streamline your bell time, standardize those lengths of day, and then still looking at the challenges in terms of where students reside in proximity to the schools that they're attending. The system review, again, in itself, part of what, you know, I want to emphasize here is that the routing software is a product of the information that you have to put into it. Again, it's dictated by the policies that you put in place. And so those are things that we've worked with the transportation team to make sure that they're effectively represented within the routing software. But as far as the route structures themselves, again, without being able to change or modify some of the things that are currently outside of Sylvania schools' control, the route structures essentially, they are what they are in current state. One of the things that we do note for the Sylvania Department specifically is that the routing staffing function is currently understaffed and they're working through that currently. That would be an area where just having, you know, additional support by being able to hire another person would help. And they're currently working through that. So that was one thing that we noted just in terms of how we assess routes. We say for most districts, any district that has more than 50 routes needs at least two routers, particularly to divide the regular education and special education function. So that was an area that we noted within our analysis as well. Last here, and before we get to the conclusion recommendations, just in terms of calling out, what did route yield itself reveal? There were 195 runs that did show that they were underutilized in terms of time and capacity. But when you look at what it would take and what we would normally recommend is, okay, let's look at these 195 runs. A run does not mean that you can pull a bus off of the road. Those 195 runs are representative of, it could be the first, second, and third tier in the morning and the afternoon. You have to be able to consolidate a full route, meaning that you can pull that bus out of every single tier before it can come off the road. But what we found in each of those situations, primarily in the afternoon, is that there was not a way to consolidate it by adding more time because you have about 25 minutes between tiers in the afternoon. So until you're able to, again, align and standardize those bell times, you don't have enough time in the afternoon to remove runs from the system. You're running the number of runs that you have to in order to provide service to students. The other opportunities, again, would be to start looking at, are there ways for you to get more close to what it says in state policy or state law in terms of where you place your bus stops? Are you willing to consider moving bus stops up to half a mile? It is not a requirement, but you have that flexibility. But what that does, as we know, is it does require students to walk a little bit further. And Sylvania provides itself on providing the level of service in which parents are not having to walk their students that far. Run reduction does not necessarily, again, equate a route reduction. I think that's important to note. Just because you have time and space on a specific run on a tier does not mean a full bus can be removed. And because the changes with bell times are currently one of the primary constraints, there's not an opportunity to really consolidate those runs in a way to become more efficient. And when I say consolidate, when you consolidate, in theory, that provides you the opportunity to free up a bus and a driver to do something else, maybe to dedicate it solely to another route or another run or another school. But you don't have that opportunity because of the constraints with your bell times and again, with where your students are currently residing and attending schools. Conclusion, Sylvania's challenges primarily are attributed to what school districts across the nation are facing. Your school bus driver shortage, you do have conflicting public and non-public school requirements in terms of, again, the geographic area in which students are residing versus where their schools are based. Geographically-based attendance, when you have a traditional transportation system, students live in an area, they're assigned to this school and that's where they go. But when you are operating with a more school-based or a school-choice program or the opportunity to select schools that benefit your students most, while that certainly is an opportunity for parents to ensure that their students are getting the educational services that they need and the preferences that they have in terms of how their students receive education, from a transportation perspective, it makes it very difficult to operate in a manner other than what Sylvania is currently doing. Again, time constraints are particularly problematic in the afternoon, as we demonstrated in the bell time schedule and the 29 different start and end times that are much more constrained in the afternoon in terms of varying release times. And then the location of the schools, with the majority of non-public schools currently outside of the district boundary and having to provide transportation to those schools, there's not a manner in which you can collect students within the boundary and move them to another portion of the district without utilizing a hub-and-spoke system. In preparation for next year, one of the things that, you know, we've recommended is just making sure that, again, from a routing perspective, just the ability to publish information early to get routes put together so that parents and community members are aware. Having that additional staffing in the routing area within the department is critical. Making sure that any feasibility, that anything that may be possible in terms of aligning lengths of day, having those conversations now. It may not be possible for the 23, 24 school year, but having the community be aware and having public and non-public school partners be aware of the fact that this is an area that could, in the future, yield efficiencies if there's a way to align those lengths of day and start grouping and tiering schools in a more effective manner. Considering your walk-to-stop policies, your walk-to-bus stop and walk-zone policies, those are opportunities to start moving towards streamlining the length of routes in terms of the number of stops that are on routes. But again, that only goes so far if you're unable to affect the change with your bell times. And then last but not least, in terms of next year, continuing to go through processes like these. I applaud the district for taking the opportunity. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Transportation Department. Not all the time do we walk into an operation where they're willing to be so transparent and candid about what they are doing, to be able to share the data and information that indicates that they're doing the best they can under the circumstances. But going through this process, auditing routes, making sure that you're uncovering everything that you can to determine if you can become more efficient and making sure that the public is aware of what you are doing to be as efficient as you can in current state. I think that's a key part of what we recognize throughout this study and, again, that we feel like is important to communicate as we wrap up our findings. That's all that I have, so I will certainly open it up for questions if there are any.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About the geographically-based attendance in cross-district. Is that something that we're doing currently?
No, so for public schools, for students who attend public schools, they live in an area where they're probably attending their home school, the area that's closest or the school that's within their residential area. For non-public school students, they can reside anywhere in the district and select a school that they want to attend. So they would not be geographically based in an eligible student. They're not eligible based on geographic location.
I understand. So that just refers to the folks that are choosing the non-public district?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not talking about the way we route our existing schools or have our current schools districted.
Correct.
Just let me try to understand. So it sounds like, obviously, the biggest item that we could do to help the situation would be to align start and end times or length of day between our schools and the non-publics. Obviously, that's not going to be possible. So the only other item we can really look at is walk zones or the walk distance?
In terms of what could start to make, provide you a little bit more time. So one of the key areas that we focused in on primarily was your middle school routes. There seems to be a capacity on those routes, but in the afternoon, you don't have the time to really affect it. But what we did notice was that there were situations in which there were quite a few stops on routes. To remove those stops would remove time. However, to remove some of those stops, you would be requiring students to walk further distances. And one of the things that, again, was a very candid part of the conversation with the Transportation Department is that we have historically provided a high level of service. We've placed stops at locations in which parents are not having to walk students too far, they can still kind of see their students in line's eyesight. And one of the unpopular recommendations that we often have to make as an outside advisory firm is, you've got entirely too many stops on this bus route. If you consolidate some of those stops, you may be able to save five minutes. And five minutes in transportation is quite a bit of time. But at the end of the day, again, particularly in the afternoon, it's the time between those bell times that will still cause you to run into challenges. And so while you may be able to gain some efficiency in individual runs by looking at stop placement, it's not going to change the complexion of the entire system unless you make wide-scale changes, which are more of your bell times that are impacting the entire system as a whole.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, Micah, thank you for your presentation. It was quite thorough and enlightening. It's an honest conversation about the challenges that we face here in Sylvania schools. And it appears that we are not the only ones across the nation facing these challenges. But we will continue to work with our CNPs. And if nothing else, begin the conversation about what we can do with aligning start and end times and length of school day. As you emphasize, it's not just start and end times, but the length of the school day. And that, of course, will take some time. There's no magic wand to that because with the number of schools that we have, what I wrote down was 29 different start times. And that's 17 CNPs that are outside of our district that we would need to have come to the table and have a conversation about what the potential of what that could look like. Even if we chunked some together with like times based on their locations throughout the city or the area, it might even be an opportunity. But I thank you and your team for providing the results of this study. We certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, we are with you. Oh, no, this is our first opportunity for public participation for items that are on the agenda. We have none, so we are with you, Mr. You, Mr. Pope.
I have just two items so we can do it separately if you want tonight. Item 4.1, issuance and sale tax anticipation notes for the purpose of general permanent improvements. We're going to use that for some facility upgrades. We have some needs for, at our athletic complexes and transportation. We have several buses that we're going to need to purchase. And this will allow us to identify, we've identified the needs, be able to address those needs in a short term through our permanent improvement fund.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
4.2 is just appropriation or amended certificate changes for the month. We had just a few for the month. I highlighted those in yellow in one of the documents. Got to submit that to the county.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Motley?
Thank you. I will begin with item 5.1, which is the recommendation to approve a field trip for our Southview High School orchestra with Megan and Samantha, who are our directors, and they will be traveling to New York on April 5th, 2024. They are a year out. I'm so proud.
Appreciate that.
Advanced application.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, it is my pleasure to recommend item 5.2, the appointment of Kelly Kohler as principal of Whiteford Elementary.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I do have a few comments. Kelly is here in the audience tonight just to tell everyone a little bit about her. She has served as the Whiteford Elementary principal part-time because she has been split between two buildings for the past year. But she comes from Champaign, Illinois. She served as an elementary assistant principal at Kenwood Elementary. She also has served as a special education teacher for 10 years, I do believe. She received her bachelor's degree from Eastern Illinois University and her master's degree from the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. And her master's is in the area of education policy, I believe, and organizational leadership. She's been a great part of our team for the last year, and we congratulate her on this position once the board approves it. So thank you for coming tonight, Kelly.
Congratulations. Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Congratulations, Kelly. I don't know if you have any words that you want to share or say?
Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Thank you guys. Thank you.
It's a pleasure. We're looking forward to it. So now the work really begins. We're going to start. Tim's going to email you several times a day, all that good stuff.
Right.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 5.3, which is payment in lieu of for the parental contracts for the 2022, 2023 year submitted as attached.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
These are for this school year?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Call the roll.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.4 for the board to provide a resolution to authorize the solicitation of professional design services for the development of a facilities master plan.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All right, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I also would like to recommend for a first read, several policies for item 5.5. And that's all of my recommendations.
Are there any questions or comments on the policy? I know we're not voting, but is there any? No discretion.
Did everybody get theirs earlier?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, we are with you, Mr. Tversky.
Thank you. I am recommending approval of items 6.1 through 6.4 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 are licensed new substitutes. 6.2 is a licensed unpaid leave of absence. 6.3 are licensed resignation and retirement date change. 6.4 licensed extra duty.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.4.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending approval of items 7.1 through 7.5 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 is classified extra hours. 7.2 are classified new hires. 7.3 classified contract recommendations. 7.4 is a classified personnel change. And 7.5 are classified resignations.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through 7.5.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending approval of items 8.1 and 8.2 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 are athletic volunteers for the 23, 24 school year and 8.2 are supplemental positions for the 23, 24 school year.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 and 8.2.
I'll second. Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for our board committee reports. Greg, do you have anything?
So you all got your centennial passes for this year. Like I said, that gets you into the local events at Centennial Terrace, not the National Acts, but a lot of local stuff. We had a sageyard meeting. There was really nothing new to report from that. Went to a CIC meeting, not much from that. And then we voted on the facilities qualifications that we're going to go out for. That's, we're looking at doing a facilities master plan, so we're going to look for qualifications from architecture firms or master planning firms that can help us with that. So we're just kind of getting going with that. And that's all I have.
Sylvania Provincial Alliance, I think we meet this week. We're still in the process of looking for a new executive director and sort of a reorganization. I did facilities with Greg, he already covered that. I did get to go see Anything Goes at Southview. It was fantastic, one of my favorite shows I've seen at Southview. I also got to go to a Song A-CAP festival that was at Southview. They had some colleges there in Northview and Southview who represented really well. Superintendent's Art Show, I went to.
Oh, the high school.
At the high school. I was blown away. I mean, the talent, it was incredible. Like, those kids were so, it was really, it was awesome. Today, I got to go to Signing Day for the Arts at Northview, which was really fantastic. I have to say that, you know, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wohobiak, Mr. Davis, Mrs. Davis, Mr. Creach, Mrs. Roth, they did such a great job. There were 10 kids that were going to several colleges, and some of the colleges were represented. Like, there was somebody there from Bowling Green, somebody was there from Ohio University, like, talking about the kids and, you know, it was just really fantastic. They've done it for like, three years now, and this is the first time I had attended it. I'll never miss it again. It was really fantastic, so, that's it.
The only thing I have is communications. Everyone saw the news, it all went out, looked great. I've gotten some positive feedback from the community on that. That's all I have. Jill?
LCA LMRC is meeting tomorrow, and Sylvania Community Services were meeting this week, phase two for a strategic plan for that.
Pretty much all I've done in the last two weeks is go to track meets, but last Friday, I did have the opportunity to go to a luncheon, kind of in my other capacity, but this was through the Toledo Bar Association. It was honoring essay winners for their essay contest, which was about the cornerstones of democracy. And in past years, and I've been watching this for years, and there's usually, there's often one Sylvania child, maybe, who went, a student. And that's amazing because they get like 150, 200 essays. They give out, there's three levels. There's junior, senior, which is Division One, freshman, sophomore, which is Division Two, and then seventh and eighth grade, which is Division Three. So there's a lot of opportunities. Anyway, it was really exciting this year because there were two children from McCord who won, and they're both in Mr. Buddhist's class. And then Mr. Buddhist's daughter also won. So Mr. Buddhist is kind of the connecting thread there, but the two students, the two McCord students are Logan Call and Brayden Stewart. And then Samantha Buddhist also won. And I just have to say, the Toledo Bar Association Foundation pays, there's kind of a little honorarium, honorarium that comes with that. And they doubled it this year. So the first prize winner's got $450 and the second prize got 300, third prize got 200. So substantial money for, you know, for junior high kids especially.
Yeah, like Taylor Swift.
So it was pretty cool. It was a really nice opportunity, and the parents and the teachers were invited.